In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council, was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building, the township website electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers indicating that this work session, regular meeting, would take place in the municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, April 11, 2023.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Ed Potasnik.
Let us take the next few moments of silence to each seek our own way, whatever sources of inspiration may come your way. We ask for peace to the people of Ukraine, Israel, Lebanon, and Gaza, to the folks at Rutgers University that are striking, and the students that are missing out, in some cases, on instruction, that the leadership there may work to protect all those for learning, but also for the folks that live here in Franklin Township that work at the university, that they could have better work quality and a quality of life and wages that help meet today's financial challenges. As we look across the nation with senseless gun violence, that some common sense gun laws and reforms are enacted by people, we pray that President Biden and Vice President Harris and Governor Murphy, Commissioner Director of Hometown here in Chanel Robinson, our hometown Assemblyman Joe Danielson, as well as Senator Smith and Joe Egan, and all of us here on council and throughout the municipality and our regions do the best they can for the people of our communities and enact with fairness, equity, and justice. Amen.
Madam Clerk, take attendance.
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yeah.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Present.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Udine.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
We are now on to commendations and proclamations. Councilwoman Sheepa Udine.
One, good evening. Dr. Karazi here from Interfaith. He is the president of Interfaith Council, so he will accompany me for this proclamation. Whereas freedom of religion holds the distinction as a cherished right and a foundational value upon which the laws and ethics of the United States are based and were as enriched by the unparalleled diversity of its residents, the Township of Franklin takes great pride in supporting individuals who express their religious freedom and is strengthened by the many varied cultural traditions of its diverse population, including those of American Muslims. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas the history of Islam in this country dates back to before its founding, originating with enslaved Africans who brought their Muslim beliefs with them to the Americas and who later contributed in numerous ways to the founding of the nation. And whereas today there are millions of American Muslims, both immigrants and native-born, of diverse backgrounds and beliefs. And whereas American Muslims within the Township of Franklin strive to promote peace and understanding between all faiths, identities, and nationalities while upholding those values and principles that define the American people. And whereas currently Muslims around the world are also observing the month of Ramadan by fasting from sunrise to sunset for spiritual reflection and to help bring awareness to the plight of the less fortunate. And whereas the end of the month of Ramadan is celebrated with the Eid al-Fitr festival, which is a joyous occasion marked by the sharing of sweets, gifts, and goods, and familial tidings, and friends, and neighbors. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the Township of Franklin do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023, American Muslim Heritage Month, and extend the respect and camaraderie every American deserves as we call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. And this is to you, Dr. Karazi. Do you have something to say?
Mr. Mayor and the council, thank you very much. You know, some of you may not know that Franklin Township is the second diverse town in the state of New Jersey. And this body, time after time, they have shown their appreciation by proclamation like this, and also the members of this body participating in various celebration, as well as traditions of diverse community that we have. We have 72 houses of worship in this township, and that's really something to be proud of. So again, thank you, and God bless you, and God bless this township. And I see that there are two more proclamation coming. Since I'm here, I want to wish our Tamil friends Happy New Year, as well as the Hindu friends Happy New Year. Thank you.
He made the introductions for me. Councilman Embarrasson. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor. What was I thinking?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Alex Dr. Karazi. This time I'm going to get it right. Okay, so I'm going to do two proclamations today. One is for the Tamil New Year, which is a language in South India. That's where I am from. I speak Tamil. So I always, when I make mistakes with English, Bill knows this, I always have an excuse. English is my second language, so you can forgive me for any pronunciation errors or anything, formation, whatever it might be. But anyway, I speak Tamil at home. I grew up with that language. It's one of the ancient languages. Our state is named after our language, so we hail from there. And we have some of my friends who have been with the Tamil Association of New Jersey for many, many years. We celebrate this, in fact, next weekend, we are celebrating Tamil New Year right here in Franklin. Franklin High School, we have a large event celebrating Tamil New Year. So I wanted to do a proclamation for the Tamil New Year. Whereas Tamil is one of the longest surviving classical languages in the world, with a traceable history of history exceeding 3200 years. And whereas the Tamil community is widespread with about 100 million native speakers across the globe and is recognized as an official language in India, Sri Lanka, and Singapore, as well as a minority language in Canada, South Africa, and Mauritius. And whereas Franklin Tamils have made contributions to the social, educational, economic, and cultural fabric of Franklin Township, including promoting Tamil language, arts, culture, and heritage. And whereas the Tamil community across the globe, every year celebrates April 14 as the Tamil New Year, also called Chitray Thirunar. And whereas Franklin Tamils are committed to sharing their vibrant culture, rich traditions, and longstanding history with the people of Franklin Township, be celebrating April 14 as Tamil New Year and promoting the Tamil language, education, arts, charity, and heritage. Now, therefore, we, Ram and Embarrasson, Councilmen-at-Large, and Philip Kramer, Mayor of the Township of Franklin, on behalf of the Township Council, do proclaim April 14, 2023, as Tamil New Year in Franklin Township. I invite Kavita Soodar to receive the proclamation. So Kavita is a Franklin resident and also is in the Executive Committee of the New Jersey Tamil Sangham.
Bonjour, good evening. Greetings, everyone. Respected, honorable mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council, and my dear friends. Let me first give my heartfelt thanks for the Tamil New Year proclamation from our own township. As we have already seen, Tamil is one of the oldest living languages, and coming from a neighborhood of Franklin Township, recognizing this is a very big thing for us. I really thank you. I would like to just say that I am a resident of this wonderful, friendly, beautiful township for the past eight years, and happy that our township has recognized and is giving Tamil New Year proclamation. I'm an active member of the Tamil New Jersey Tamil Sangham, a nonprofit organization that promotes arts and culture of Tamil people living in New Jersey. We have a huge presence in New Jersey, and Township has a lot of Tamil people living in this beautiful neighborhood, and this is such an honor and recognition. Thank you so very much, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. For those who don't know, India has got, really, 22 official languages and hundreds of dialects. My wife and I speak a different language, literally. So a lot of times I don't understand her. That's an excuse. So she comes from a neighboring state, and that's a different language altogether. And there are many, many languages, and every state, in fact, has their own unique language. And this being a lunar year, a lot of our calendars are based on lunar system. And around this time of the year, many of these states celebrate their new year. So it's just not possible to do one for every language and state. So I did another one. We're all Hindus. So I did another one that encompasses a number of other languages and festivals celebrating the new year. So I'm calling it the Hindu New Year's proclamation. I think it's pretty much similar, so I'm going to just call out the festivals or the new year in those languages. Whereas on March 22, 2023, Hindus in Franklin Township celebrated the Hindu New Year, which can be called various other names depending on the region. Varsha Pratipada, Ugadi, Ugadi, Guripadva, Bayshaki, Bihu, Puttandhu, Vishu, which is my wife's language New Year, Pana Sangkranthi, and Pohila Baishakka, and so on. So there are a lot of Hindus in the world, and of course, the majority of India is Hindus. And by the way, India has got, India is the third largest country with the Muslim population after Indonesia and Pakistan. By the way, Alex Dr. Karazi is going to be running for council this November with us, me, Kimberly, and the mayor. So I just wanted to introduce him as a council candidate as well. I forgot about it last time. So I invite some of our Hindu members, a few of you, maybe two, three of you can come. Yes. Or you can all come. We're all Hindus, so all of you can come. Come on, Rajik. Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
This is a surprise to us, so we are not prepared for a speech. But thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for recognizing all the cultures in India by giving the proclamation. So as an origin, I proudly accept this in all the subcultures in India.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Embarrasson, for not asking me to read that last one. Okay, it's public discussion time. Do we have emotions open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public, five minutes apiece. May only speak once. No yielding of time. Please state your name and address, and council will answer questions at the end of public session.
Hello, good evening. Kiki Anastasakos, 3204 Enclave Circle in Canal Walk. Excuse me. And well, here we are again. On May 3, there will be a hearing of the benign warehouses next to our homes. And I'm here to voice my opposition, and the opposition of many others in my community of Canal Walk and in the group that we have formed, the Citizens Warehouse Action Group. And to say that we are deeply concerned, first of all, we would like to thank the council and the planning board and everybody else in Franklin Township for everything that they have done so far and everything they are trying to do in order to make this unfortunate situation as painless as possible. And we understand that not everything is in your hands. Having said that, we are concerned because we believe that our township and our democracy is at stake when mega corporations like Amazon, Blackstone, and Link Logistics march through our towns and take over our most precious resources, open space, clean air, clean water, in the name of economic growth, and pretending to be our future good neighbors, quote unquote. We have organized since last May, so it's almost a year, that we have nonstop attended these meetings, the planning board meetings, and we have had our ups and downs, and we're still organizing, and we're still fighting, and we continue to do so. But fighting these corporations makes us feel quite powerless, except for one tool in our toolbox. We have what we call the power of the gray vote. That's the gray or senior vote. I'm sure you know that as a voting bloc, seniors, probably because they have nothing else to do, they vote in large numbers, and they are extremely informed about local and state and national, international events. And they vote as a bloc. Just for example, in the presidential election of 2020, when the voter turnout was the highest, people in the age of 65 to 74 voted at 76%, while the lowest among those ages, 18 to 24, at 51%. So clearly, a 25% difference. So here is the other thing. Despite the fact that we are, most of us in Canal Walk and in my group are over 60, 65, sometimes over 70, 75, some of us in our 80s, according to the statistics, we are going to be here for a while. 10,000 Americans spend 60 every day, and on average, we will live an additional 23 years. So good news for those who are approaching their 60s and 65s. So we will continue because, as I said, we believe that not only our democracy, but also our town is in peril. And I will close by saying that we're not nimbyers. It's not the benign warehouse that we're just concerned about. I mean, clearly, that's what mobilized us. But it's just unfortunate that we are in a situation, we, and with due respect to you as members of the council and the planning board, are faced with a situation where the for-profit corporations are taking over our resources, and we're focusing on economic development instead of what the community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Jan Brandt, 22 Bryant Court, also a resident of Canal Walk. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to also talk about benign and warehouse that's going to be built 100 feet away from a community of over 2,000 people that live in Canal Walk, also 200 feet away from people who live in Summerfields, and how this is really going to be negatively impacting our community. One of the things that I noticed that Councilman Potasnik said is that he was saying a prayer for the Rutgers professors and for their quality of life. And I hope that you all will say a prayer for all of us and our quality of life because our quality of life, if that warehouse gets built 100 feet away from my bedroom windows and is operating 24/7, my quality of life will be worse than the Rutgers professors. I guarantee it. So I really hope that people are doing something in order to make sure that this doesn't happen because this is really going to be a terrible thing. I want to note, and I want to thank you all because I was able to get how many square feet of warehouse is proposed right now. So right now, we have 7,920,168 square feet of warehouse, not yet built, but that's the total amount. What's been built so far since 2018 is 5,595,900 million square feet of warehouse has been built in Franklin Township. There's 2,324,268 million left to be built that hasn't been approved yet. And I'm really disappointed that there hasn't been a traffic study done in order to make sure that Franklin Township can accommodate all this traffic. I hope that people will be safe. I know in our community, the seniors are really frightened. I mean, we have several pictures of, you know, the trucks making the turns and just not being able to make it. And it's really just, it's a frightening thing. Also, I know that that was promised, but of course, that's not going to be done, you know, probably till the end of this year. And that's really disappointing because that was promised to us last year in 2022, and we were really hopeful about that. The other thing is, is that something was said about the 24/7. I mean, if we have a warehouse that's 100 feet away from our residents and it's operating 24/7, that really sucks, okay? I mean, that's a terrible, terrible thing. And, you know, you're preserving land around, you know, where on your side of the town where everybody lives, but, you know, nothing's being helped over on our side of the town. So I really hope that that 24/7 doesn't happen. I want to thank Vince for giving me the information. I know last time I spoke, I spoke about the traffic reports and all, and I'm kind of grateful to hear that. So all the traffic studies have been done on the warehousing 150. So I hope, so that means that next door to us, it's not going to be a fulfillment center, though I'm not really sure if it's just a traditional warehouse, why it needs to operate 24/7. So all the warehouses that have been built in Franklin Township, that 5.5 million, have gone by the traffic impact of a regular warehouse not operating 24/7 at all. So I'm kind of grateful to see that maybe that, if that's true, that Link Logistics is not building a fulfillment center. So does that mean if they change their mind and they build a fulfillment center, but they did their traffic impact on just a regular traditional warehouse, that means they can't build a fulfillment center or do a distribution center, that it's just a regular warehouse? So I'm really grateful to hear that that's happening. So I, and somebody asked a question about the, I know tonight you're doing a second reading on the water, and this person who can't be here tonight wanted to know, when will there really, when will there possibly be an ordinance that addresses the fact that it's not only built on a floodplain that causes floods? So when benign schoolhouse, you know, takes up all that cover and builds on the wetlands and whatnot, you know, are you assuring us that we're not going to have any flooding coming over to our area? So we've got the noise going on, we've got the 24/7, we've got the, I haven't even covered the diesel fuels because I only have 10 seconds left. But I really hope that the next prayer that you say in two weeks from now is to make sure that our quality of life in Franklin Township, Summerfields, Canal Walk, is not impacted.
Hi, Jim Johnston, 34 Norwich Place. It's been a while since I've been here to speak, so it's good to be back. A lot of us have been talking about the benign warehouse, but not many of us have been talking about the even bigger warehouse at 163 Western Road that's going to be right next to benign. And I want to make some comments about that and ask a question about that because last year, the Franklin Environmental Commission held a meeting in October 17. They did a site review of that warehouse at 163 Western Road, which is where that horse farm is. They estimate they're going to have to cut down 5,000 trees just for that one warehouse, and that doesn't even include the benign. So if you include the benign warehouse, God knows how many more thousands of trees will have to be cut down. So that's my question. I think we have to look at the big picture. I mean, yes, benign is going to have an environmental impact, but this other warehouse, I mean, I think we're talking about a major environmental impact. You know, and if, just as a point of reference, last year, the planning board approved the warehouse at 31 Schoolhouse Road. And for that warehouse, they said they're going to have to cut down 670 trees. Okay, now, when they said that, that was pretty shocking. I thought 670 trees was a lot of trees, but now they're saying 5,000. Okay, so I just don't know what to say. I mean, this is just, it's just mind-boggling. I don't know what even to compare it to. I mean, what comes to my mind is the destruction of the Amazon, the Amazon, the Amazon rainforest in South America. I mean, I don't know what else to compare it to. I mean, to think of the, think of the rich biodiversity of plant life and wildlife that exists in all that land, it's all going to be destroyed. Okay, so, okay, so it just, now, the other thing I wanted to talk about is, last month, the planning board had some more discussions about those 32 homes they're going to build in back of the Restus Gas Station at the corner of Cedar Grove Lane and Amwell Road. So that project has not gone away. That's still, that project is still alive. It sounds like they're going to start building them pretty soon. And of course, further down Cedar Grove Lane, closer to Eastern Avenue, they're continuing to build those 53 townhomes. And these are all luxury homes. They're not affordable homes. So I hate to see what the traffic is going to be on Cedar Grove Lane when they get done with all these housing developments. So it just seems to me that, I think the warehouse ordinance was a good first step, but we still need to do a lot more. And so because the overdevelopment is still out of control. All right, thanks a lot.
Hi, I'm Shauna, College 2201, Jockey Hollow Trail enclave from Canal Walk. I just want to talk about the scenic corridor district overlay. Okay, so the statement of purpose, the purpose of the scenic corridor district overlay, so to protect the township's beautiful resources where they can exist along certain designated scenic roadways as identified in the township master plan. Two, to direct the location and design of the development to that it will enhance the visual character of the township and to provide subsistence. to that it will enhance the visual character of the township, and to provide subsis-, oh my God, sorry, visual buffers and view sheds for future residential development. Obviously, across the development is a scenic corridor, there's beautiful water there and everything, and, and all the animals. To protect the township's remaining open spaces from conventional development patterns and measures that tend to compromise the beautiful value of farmlands, fields, hedgerows, woodlands, mountain profiles, or ridge lands, plateaus, and water bodies and watercourses. So to achieve consistency with a purpose and the intent of the land use and circulation elements of the Township Master Plan and the New Jersey State Department Development and Redevelopment Plan, the definition as used in this chapter, the following term shall have the meaning indicated. So, for the scenic corridors, the panoramic vistas of natural or built environments, unique or, or features of natural or historic significance, extended, not obstructed view sheds, mature woodlands, dense tree stands of substantial individual trees, open fields or active agriculture operations, water bodies or watercourses. Obviously, you know, we're going to mess around with this beautiful landscape, and, and all the little animals are going to come over to Canal Walk, we're going to have flooding and all of that. Right across the street from a resident, Jan Brant, I see there's a little ribbon there that shows the 200 feet. It is so close to Mettler's Road. I, I mean, it's unbelievable. And the traffic, and just FYI, that traffic on Schoolhouse Road, you think no 18-wheelers go there from Schoolhouse to Weston Canal? I tracked it. Five 18-wheelers within 15 minutes of each other at 11:15 in the morning. Okay? Plus, we need to control that schoolhouse. I don't, I guess you can talk to the police department or head of transportation, but they're hot-riding on Schoolhouse Road, but that's not, that's a whole nother deal. But these 18-wheelers, they're not following directions. And if we have this huge two warehouses, now the other one at 163 plus B-9, oh my gosh. Okay, and as I said last time I saw you all, we senior citizens, okay, have trouble just getting out of Canal Walk, because they can't see this car or that car. And then the trucks coming and all of that, we just, you know what, you know, you know how passionate this group is about this. So I just want, I don't want to destroy any beautiful farmlands and all of this. I mean, everybody deserves money, and everybody deserves whatever, but we have to think of quality of life. And unfortunately, it's going to mess up a lot. And so, you know, and hopefully, I have a few more years to enjoy this before, you know, my time has passed. And, you know, for generations and generations to come. I know you all understand it. You're smart people. You're a great council, and we admire all of you, and we appreciate everything you've done and listen to us. So thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Johnny Tibbs, 25 Parkside. First, I'd like to give my deepest and sincerest praises contined to the, to the Hindu population. I'm sorry, I'm a Baptist, and I, and I want to show my congratulations to you, all the Hindus, all the different guys. And I wish you would have to hear what I was going to say, though, you know? Looking me off of my field, I mean. I would like to say that I understand the quality of life and the people, Canal Walk and the whole bit, but I am against it all. We need as many warehouses, because we need jobs in our community. I can understand that you have the million-dollar homes and so forth, and you don't like the trucks riding down your road, but the trucks provide jobs for the people in my area. You know what I mean? We need as many warehouses as we can in Franklin Township. And also, the more warehouse you have, the less your taxes will be. Okay, you have to understand the other part of it, too. You know what I mean? And we need a lot of warehouses. It's same thing in terms of we need somewhere to live. We don't have nowhere to live, you guys. You know, we don't have nowhere to live. I mean, our, our council people have not provided any place for us to live in our township. You know what I mean? We can't afford the million-dollar houses that you have in Canal Walk. We have to go with low-income housing. And you know that they have affordable income, but there is nothing affordable. So they need to stop doing it. And we want to build some apartments over there on, on Canal Walk, I mean, Kmart, let that man build some apartments, please. Then you'll have some money to put into the small businesses and so forth. You know, anybody else want to build some apartments? Let them build some apartments and make sure that the rent be low enough so your residents can, can live in them. That's how the council people are supposed to take care of their people. I can understand Canal Walk and, and the trucks up riding down the road. I work at a place, I know a place right now that got 100 employees in it, and that one I'm black. In Franklin Township. I know I have to train my young men. I'm going to see the man now to make sure we have a work training place. You have to take care of all of us. And I'm here asking for the Hindu mercy, and please support Johnny Tibbs and the people in the Fourth and Fifth Ward. Please. You know I got your back. You know that already. Okay? What else is there? I want the people in Canal Walk, there's a guy out there named Frank. Hey, Frank, you hear me? You know? Get on, please. The warehouses, build as many as you can, so we can have somewhere, I could train my young men to have somewhere to go to work. We would like to work in our own town. If we don't have no warehouses, we ain't got nowhere to work. We can't go out of town somewhere. We ain't got no car. Please, make some type of provisions, or, I don't know the, the, the statistical data, but have such places where we can, in industrial area, where we can go work in our own, in our own town. Thank you. I'm finished.
Anyone else wishing to speak? There we go.
Debbie Stewart, 2 Farrington Plaza. I really wasn't going to say anything, but just in response to his comments, I do feel there is a place for warehouses. It is not on top of residential communities. So we've already gone there. We're not saying, don't bring warehouses, but bring them to the right places. And of course, we want the people in Franklin Township to have jobs. But my question also, do you have the facts of how many people from Franklin Township are working in these warehouses? So that's just hypothetical, that all the Franklin Township young, excuse me, men and women are going to be working there. So you don't have data on that? Okay. To his point, maybe not a good point. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, say when no one else come forward. Take a motion that we close public session?
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor of closing public session, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. The ayes have it, public session is closed.
I got beat up.
Council comments. Start with the illustrious Councilmember Ed Potasnik.
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry I missed the meeting last week. I had to travel for work. And on top of it, I, I got an invitation to go to the White House, which was very cool, to talk about the Inflation Reduction Act, the bipartisan infrastructure bill, and different initiatives under President Biden to help invest in communities, and how we can benefit here in Franklin Township. And I, no, I sent to the Township Manager one such idea around infrastructure, around electric vehicle charging, as we transition away from internal combustion engine vehicles to more electric vehicles. A number of folks, you know, not have control over their driveway or garage, they're sharing parking on city streets, and that we need to make sure we're prepared. If we wait, it'll be on all of you as taxpayers to help put in that infrastructure. But if we take advantage of the federal funds, it'll come at basically no cost. So I know they are taking a look at that, as well as a number of other issues. So I appreciate you guys missing me. I know I got a lot of emails and messages, and it was, hopefully, I can bring back some of the knowledge. And then the last two things I wanted to mention is, on the 15th, which is a Saturday, and I want to thank the Township Manager for reminding me to, to invite all of you, from 9:30 to 12, there's going to be a stream cleanup. This is Earth Month, Octo-, I guess, April 22nd is Earth Day. And the, I guess if you drive down Hamilton Street and you pass, I think, the landmark, the Jamaican Jerk Chicken, which is sort of on the right-hand side down the hill into New Brunswick, there's a church on the left, that river there actually opens into a park. And there's going to be a stream cleanup there from 9:30 to 12 on Saturday, the 15th. And then the following Wednesday, the 19th, from 3:00 to 6:00, there'll be a cleanup as well for the Environmental Commission at Neiman Williams Park. So if you're able to volunteer and spend some time, all the bags are provided, and the Public Works Department does a great job at picking up the trash in cooperation with the Lower Raridan Partnership. It's a really great way to spend some time and see some of the beauty that exists in the Fourth and Fifth Ward. So I just invite everyone to participate in that. With that, I, and my comments today.
Councilman O'Leary Chaka.
Yes, sir. I wish to use this opportunity to alert. Karazi has been an instrumental figure in promoting the Franklin. He uses his position, Interfaith, head of Interfaith, at all people, races, in the one group, one Franklin. And also, has been working very, very hard for all in Franklin. So I use this opportunity to say it to him one more time. Dr. Alex, thank you for the, all the good job you've been doing in Franklin, and we hopefully wish that you continue on it. Thank you. Mayor, that's.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Pruitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Full disclosure, I, I can't even recall what I did yesterday. I'm sorry. No, but I, yeah.
Get some rest.
I gotta get some rest. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Francois.
I just want to say that I learned a lot here tonight. Deputy Mayor Ram, Rambarasan, thank you so much for that rich, rich history. Congratulations to the Hindu people, and your, to celebrate your, your proclamation for your new year. And this whole Tamal thing, I didn't know anything about that. I have, in years past, gone to the Interfaith Council, and I did that this year as well, and I really enjoy that. I've learned a lot about Ramadan. We really do have a very diverse town here. And I'm so proud to be a part of it, and I'm so proud to have people come here and talk about their heritage, and their cultures, and their backgrounds, and exposing other people like me in the township about the diversity and the richness that we have here in Franklin Township. So congratulations. Thank you for coming out. And thank you. I believe you probably wrote those proclamations. I don't know if Anna Marie could have pulled that off.
I did.
You did it yourself? Did you help her? Did you help her? She did that herself?
Yes.
Oh, I'm very impressed. I'm sorry. I owe you an apology.
Next week, she gets a proclamation.
Yeah, next week, you get a proclamation. Exactly. That was great. I really, I really learned a lot here tonight. I, I really appreciate that. So thank you, Deputy Mayor, for that. And thank you all for coming out and sharing your, your rich heritage and your culture with us. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman James Vassanella.
Yes. You saved a lot of what I had to say, Councilwoman Francois. You said it eloquently, and that was a lot of what I was going to say. Thank you. And yes. And I know there'll be probably more forums, although this is great, that the whole subject matter could be discussions and, and communication, introduction of cultures, and the celebrations, and milestones, and religions. It's so interesting, and obviously such a part of our fabric now, more than ever in Franklin. A couple of meetings attended, one being the Public Works Meeting, myself and some colleagues were out right before this meeting. Not a lot to report. Asphalt prices are going up, which isn't good. But, but some other good projects, one I'll mention, Lilian Street and Meister Street, off Hamilton to Fifth Ward, will be getting what we kind of refer to as a streetscape improvement, because it's too narrow to have sidewalks. We're going to go with curbs where there are, were not any before, and drainage improvements, and water, I think they're doing water work, but basically making sure everything underground and above ground is set for the future. That project will be happening in 20, in 23. And, and of course, safer and make for better movement, both pedestrian and vehicular traffic, new signage, et cetera. Shade Tree Committee meeting was also at, they're very busy, there's a lot going on. Arbor Day is coming up later this month. This year, they're doing a event with the high school, I believe it's a high school or a middle school, where we're planting a tree and doing a nice Arbor Day event, getting that into the mindset of, you know, all of our youth as much as possible, also the value of not just replenishing what we tear down, but adding to our tree canopy safely in Franklin. They do some amazing stuff, and I don't have a link, but the Shade Tree Commission has a lot of information that might be interesting, interesting to a lot of the people here and at home, relevant to tree canopy, and just how much we're losing and gaining, and it's just a whole interesting science with a little art mixed in. I know there was some mention about jobs. Unfortunately, we have absolutely, that I'm aware of, attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, no say or control. Of course, we can, we can promote and recommend, but we have no jurisdiction over who a private business hires. I 100% support, and seen a lot come out of this council in the last few years, especially Deputy Mayor and others having to do with job placement, job training. And that's where I think we can continue, continue what has been an ongoing increase through the youth center. And I know people, Deputy Mayor has been, we're trying to bring into the fold. So, but we have no, so building something is not going to necessarily provide a job. If anything, it'll probably provide a job to people from out of town, which will just increase the traffic flow and dangers that already are here. So, you know, I, I do support what, the theory or the spirit of what was mentioned. And the same thing with housing. Right now, by most people's objective evaluation, even what we have in our housing stock that's deemed, quote, affordable, by no means, I believe, is going to fulfill the, the need, the true need that was brought up earlier about truly affordable housing. I support affordable housing, but for the type of housing that is for the people that most in need, financial crisis, so to speak, or financial need on a month-to-month basis, is unfortunately nothing that we have any say in or control on, on a, on a municipal level. Trenton and Washington, of course, can create or further subsidize and support initiatives. But again, I wish it was that easy. We do what we can in the way of Habitat for Humanity and other, I think, thinking outside the box. As a matter of fact, I think we have more in Franklin than anywhere else in the county, by, by a good measure, Habitat for Humanity houses and whatnot. So I don't want to keep getting into the weeds with that, but I, I think all of us would love to have more of what was mentioned, and nobody doubts the need or the sincerity. But there's laws, that's all I could say, and regulations we have to operate under. Otherwise, I hope everybody had a wonderful Easter, Passover, and Ramadan, any other events. This is a, in a way, a joyful This is a, in a way, a joyful time, celebrations for a lot of people in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Udine.
Thank you. Good evening. There's a lot going on this weekend, township, good stuff. So I think there's a blood drive on April 14th, right here in the council from 6:00 to 8:00, which is a great opportunity for you to come and give your Tony Blood for a good cause.
It's actually from 9:00 to 3:00.
Is it 9:00 to 3:00? Oh, I'm so sorry. 9:00 to 3:00, okay. There you go. 9:00 to 3:00, so you have that time. April 15th, the long-awaited Skateboard Park has an official ceremony and super excited about that in Middle Bush. So that's from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m.?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's from 10:00 to 12:00 in Middle Bush Park and hopefully, please come out, it's supposed to be a nice day, so looks to be a good event. Councilman mentioned about our Public Works Meeting that we had earlier today. What I do want to bring out is there's going to be a couple of changes in the fountain in the premium parks. There's been installation of a dog fountain, so we're taking some of our existing fountains and modifying it as we can to make sure our furry friends have a place to drink water. So the first one was Castleton Park installed. Next, it's going to be Middle Bush, Williams, Inman and so on. So we're trying to make it as inclusive everywhere for all. I know in the last meeting, we talked about surveys. The War Two is going to roll out a survey to the residents to take and provide back. It's in progress, so if there's anyone that would like to be part of the community putting the survey together, please feel free to reach out to me at either my phone or my email ID and we can gather the questions that will go, roll out to War Two. Apart from that, I will excuse myself from council for about 10 minutes to break my fast and I'll be right back. Thank you.
Sorry, he was talking.
I just said I'll excuse myself for 10 minutes to break my fast and I'll be back.
Oh.
Some other, nothing else.
You're excused. Thank you. Mr. Wright, Councilman Wright. Nothing to say. You're my favorite councilman of the night. Deputy Mayor Barasan.
Thank you, Mayor. Right off the top, I want to congratulate the second overall draft pick, Diamond Miller, our own Franklin Township's warrior basketball player, just got picked second overall. Big congratulations to her. She put Franklin in the basketball map in the USA.
WNBA?
WNBA, yes. So we are very proud of her. All right. Other than that, some of the lowlights would be, well, not really lowlights, highlights. There's an organization called Center for Science and Industry. So they were in town on 31st of March at Pine Grove Elementary School. They, one of their missions is to promote STEM education with the kids. So they, entire afternoon, I was, I spent the afternoon there at the school, all the middle school, all the elementary school kids in two batches came in and they had them do hands-on experiment, making, you know, fake clouds and making, you know, firing off rockets. And then they, all the kids got a science lunch kit to take home and Food Bank sponsored the event. They brought goodie bags for everybody and they also did the food, meal distribution at the end on the parking lot. So it was a great event to see all the kids and I participated with some of the kids. And my highlight on that day was one kid came to me and said, "Are you the governor?" And I said, "I said, 'Not yet.'" But anyway, so that was a great event. We had a lot of fun. And then last week, oh no, this week, we had the Sewage Authority Board Meeting. We are starting to do the union contract negotiation. I'm on the personnel committee there, so I'm, we met, we met with the union folks and we'll be negotiating their contract that's up, coming up in June. Other than that, we had an invitation, a bunch of us from the council went to Majid I Ali to the Iftar, that is to break fast, the fasting that the councilwoman is doing right now. So I, last year I went as well and nice turnout. We heard from some scholars about the importance of Ramadan, how it came about, the significance of it, the sacrifice and the sharing aspect of it. So to the, in the true spirit of Ramadan, at the end, we all went down and to the basement area where we had a great meal and it was wonderful to participate. Again, Franklin is full of diversity and rich cultures, various religions, various cultures. We all share and we all participate in all of them. That's what makes our town so unique and special. I just want to touch upon some of the training programs that we have been trying to run. We have not been very successful and I think for, we don't know why, but the people are not taking advantage of the programs that we rolled out. So we got to try something different, something new. I think the last meeting, and John, you are not here, I think Township Manager has announced that we will have some CDL training programs rolling out right here in town. So hopefully we can get some youth interested in those training and then we'll do something more as we go along. As you know, that we are trying to bring Raritan Valley Community College in town, so making some progress on that, motor report down the road. And I believe next week, we also have a Human Relations Commission's meeting. So unfortunately, I'm the liaison for that and I got a new assignment in the Land Use Committee, so there's a conflict. So we are trying to find one of my colleagues to take my spot on that. So on the next week's meeting, the Franklin Township Public Schools, Keon Peters would be speaking about, you know, several hot topics like equity and inclusion. And so that's happening on the next HRC meeting. That's all I got for you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So first, I want to start with this because it's important. At the last budget meeting, I made a joke which insulted some of our employees. That was never my intention. Franklin's police dispatcher's work is important and at times stressful, requiring an act, a split, an accurate split-second response where the stakes can be life and death and they do it well. I apologize for my comments and I thank them for their service. The councilwoman mentioned diversity and we're always talking about diversity, politicians love to talk about diversity, but Franklin does diversity with style. I was, I was at an Iftar and I felt so comfortable there, so, so part of them. So welcome. The councilwoman was there, the Deputy Mayor was there and the council member Potasnik was there and it was just, we were family. And it's not just diversity and it's not just tolerance. It's really, it's community. And what the Iftar theme was that night was unity and helping one another, which I rephrased as unity and community. Okay. I'm not going to count on, comment on 163 Weston. I commented too much on individual projects, but as far as the rest of property, since that's all done with, Open Space tried to buy the rest of property and they turned us down and we don't have the ability to compete with commercial interests. So we did what we could, but we can't spend all of your money in one place. And Mr. Tibbs likes to repeat that we're not doing anything when the Fourth Ward. Well, first of all, Mr. Tibbs, who seems to have left, even though, oh, there he is. You live at 25 Park Street. If there was a warehouse at 26 Park Street, I think you might feel a little differently about them. People have a warehouse going in their backyard and I once, when I was standing at that podium, said, "Everyone's backyard is my backyard and I definitely feel for them." So we are creating jobs as best we can and as far as housing, Franklin Township was the model, was cited by the judge as the model example of what you could do with COA, Coalition on Affordable Housing. So we do our part, we continue to do our part and we will continue to do our part. Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not going to talk too long today about the public comment. I do have some things after I get done with just some announcements. This Friday, the 15th, Tax Day, yay, from 9:00 to 11:00, there is a job fair for seasonal and part-time permanent positions at our Franklin Township Youth Center at 429 Lewis Street. Not necessarily just for our young people, but we also do have permanent part-time jobs at the youth center and for administrative and clerical positions. So if you're interested, you can certainly visit our website, you can pre-register, submit your resume, but you can also show up at the youth center from 9:00 to 11:00 on the 15th. And then as Councilwoman Udine mentioned earlier, we do have a blood drive here on Friday, but also on Friday, April 21st, which is next Friday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Senior Center in recognition of April as Autism Acceptance Month. Our Care Share Aware Program will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. For those who are interested in getting information, there'll be a resource fair celebrating all abilities and you can come meet with service providers and participate in activities and win giveaways. There's a magician, Mad Hatter's balloon artist and mad science for the kids. If you're, again, if you're interested in attending and want some more information, you can contact our Recreation Department at 732-873-1991, option four. Friday, April 21st. Oh, did I say Saturday? Thank you, Councilman. It is Friday, April 21st, not Saturday, April 21st. If you show up on Saturday, April 21st, they won't be there. Probably something else there, but they won't be there. Now, just a couple items I'd like to address on some of the public comments quickly. One of the comments referenced an ordinance that's on second reading today. That ordinance is in particular for those properties that fall within the defined flood plain and that definition comes from the Federal Emergency Management Administration. There would, are now certain construction requirements that go beyond the Uniform Construction Code and that really is the gist of that ordinance. It has really nothing to do with the development outside of those defined flood plain areas. Canal Walk is not in a flood plain, so it really has little or nothing to do with anything related to Canal Walk. The other thing, I just, I had the opportunity today and I'm certain that several members of our audience will have the opportunity tomorrow when they go and obtain a copy of it. I had an opportunity today to read the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission Report on B9 and I know there was some comments today about concerns about flooding. And this has been discussed both at the council by me and others, as well as at the Planning Board in reference to the New Jersey Stormwater Regulations and our Municipal Stormwater Ordinance and the requirements of that stormwater ordinance as far as the engineering design for stormwater on a new development. And I'm just going to read just one brief part of this report, which is 10 or 12 pages long. "The applicant has provided engineering calculations verifying that for stormwater leaving the site within both drainage areas," the site is divided up into north and south for drainage purposes. "The post-construction peak runoff rates for the two 10 and 100-year storm events will be no greater than 50%, 75% and 80% respectively of the pre-construction peak runoff rates." So what that means is that after construction with the installation of stormwater management controls on the site, the runoff will be less than pre-construction according to the calculations. And this is being reviewed, in my opinion, the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. This is not being reviewed by the Township of Franklin and the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission historically taking a very conservative approach in all review of development within the basin of the DNR Canal. So I just, that, not that that should put anyone's mind at ease or anything, but that's the level of review that these applications get and I just, for council's benefit, that was not from our engineer or our consulting engineer, our in-house engineer, or this is from the DNR Canal Commission Report, which is a public document and I received it today, which I believe we received it yesterday afternoon. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. You guys were going to leave. You don't have to stay.
Or you could.
You could, but it's not that exciting. You've seen the best parts.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Although Vince Dominick's going to be up, that's, that's exciting sometimes. There are no council comments, I mean council discussion items. We're on to item number 10 of the agenda, which you can get a copy of up there. Approval of the Minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for their approval. Township Council Budget Hearing, March 21st, 2023, and Township Council Work Session, Regular Meeting and Executive Session on March 28th, 2023. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, any corrections? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barasan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Approval of the warrants. Warrants is how we pay our bills and the amount of $30,164,220, $22.50 on April 11th, 2023, are presented to the Township Council for payment. Do I have a motion on the warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, any corrections, anyone want, or not corrections, anyone want to pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barasan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
The time now is for the 2023 Hamilton Street Special Improvement District Budget. We have a resolution to read the Hamilton Street Special Improvement District Budget by title only. Do we have a motion on that?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
In seconded. All in favor, oh, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barasan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright. Councilwoman Udine.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Madam Clerk.
Councilman Vasanella. Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
And now the main event, introduction of the calendar year 2023 municipal budget and public hearing on May 9th, 2023. I present Resolution 23116, which is self-examination of the budget preparation as required by DCA to the Township Council for consideration. Do we have a motion to, on the resolution?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. So what is it, every other year?
Every three years.
Every three years.
Every three years, it goes to DCA?
The two we do, one they do.
Okay. So this year, we will be doing it ourselves, as per law. Do we have any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Vas, Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
I present Resolution 23117, Introduction of the Calendar Year 2023 Municipal Budget, and set a public hearing date for May 9th, 2023, to Township Council for Consideration. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mayor, this is where I do my.
Discuss.
I will discuss, thank you. Mayor and council, in your folder should be this budget statement that I'm about to read to you. It's a kind of a summary and overview of the budget that I'm presenting to you tonight. Upon review of the proposed calendar year 23 municipal budget, you will note that there is a decrease from 2022 to 2023 of approximately $10 million. So I will address this first. The budget decreases in despite of an increase in operating expenses of more than $1.6 million, primarily attributed to an increase in pension contributions and social security taxes of $307,000, an increase in salary and wage expenses of $600,000, an increase in overtime expenses of $523,000, an increase in the library tax of $159,000, and an increase in legal expenses of $140,000. An increase in the health insurance expense of $300,000 was funded by an increased use of the Medical and Dental Trust Fund created by increased employee and retiree contributions. However, the budget increases were offset by a decrease in grants of $8.367 million. This is primarily due to the American Rescue Plan grant of $7.73 million not being repeated, but which the township has until 2026 to utilize. However, the decrease in grants is a net offset in both revenue and appropriations. Highlighting the additional key budget changes include a decrease in the capital improvement fund of $3.3 million, although we still plan to continue with township infrastructure improvements by bonding. Roads and sidewalks are planned at $4.25 million, an additional $1.3 million is planned for road-related projects. Use of fund balance is at $9.6 million, down from $13.79 million. Council managed to avoid raising municipal taxes for four years from calendar year 18 to calendar year 21. Calendar year 22 municipal tax increased by 1%, and despite significant inflation, the calendar year 23 municipal tax is also only increasing 1%. The amount to be raised by municipal tax in calendar year 23 is $35,842,746 compared to the calendar year 22 municipal tax of $35,487,867, an increase of $354,879, while continuing to maintain a high level of municipal services. However, the municipal tax rate on the total township assessed valuations will again actually decrease slightly from .3167 in '21 to .2833 in '22 to .26 in 2023. With township assessed valuations increasing from $12,524,680,778 to $13,766,118,400, reflecting a 9.91% increase, the average home at $436,860 in calendar year 23, which is up $44,563 from $392,297 in calendar year 22, we'll see a municipal-only tax increase from $1110.20 to $1135.84, an increase of $25.64. With the increase in the state-mandated library tax of $10.78 from 133.38 to 144.16, and adding the 5 cent per 100 open space tax increase of $22.28 from 196.15 to 218.43, the total net tax increase on the average home will be $58.70, going from $1,439.73 to $1,498.43. Questions?
I have no questions. I just want to highlight the main things there.
Certainly.
We went four years with no tax increase. Let me, let me qualify that. We're talking only about the municipal tax. There's also, I'm talking only about the municipal tax, not talking about schools, I'm not talking about county. The way the state does it is they also include the library as a municipal tax, but the library tax is not under our control. That's set by the state. The open space tax is something that was set by resolution, so when housing prices go up, that does go up automatically. The only number that we really have direct control of is the levy, which is the amount to be raised by taxes, and the levy went up 1%. So four years in a row of zero, last year was 1%, and this is 1%, and everyone listening to me knows the inflation climate we're in. So we, and I have to look towards the manager here, has really done everything he can do, and we have instructed him to do everything he can do to keep these numbers down. I never look at the tax rate because the tax rate's only half of the number. You also have to look at the value of the average home, so the real thing to look at is how much the, right, how much taxes the average home pays, and of what we can, due to the change in assessments, because houses went up more than did the rest of the town. So the housing went up, I think it was 11.4%, but the general tax fund went up, I'm sorry, the general assessment went up 9.9%. So because housing prices went up more than the overall prices, that means that taxes go up even if we did nothing, and I calculated that to be around $13. So then, then we raised taxes 1%, and that added another $12 or so. So we are responsible for $12 of that increase to the average home, but the housing situation has changed things to make it $25, but if you then add in open space and library, it goes up $58, $59. All right, that's my comment. Any other comments?
$58.70.
Correct.
I stand corrected.
I had this conversation with the finance officer this morning, when we originally did this budget document, which is, and credit to our finance, I will say, credit to our finance officer, our financial consultant, the Financial Oversight Committee, this was, this was more of a labor budget-wise than we have dealt with in a number of years, and this is my 10th one as Township Manager, and I would say we labored over this one much more so than we have in years past, because our financial situation in this country is one that is driving costs up. We're now post-COVID, according to the President. Today, we are post-COVID, because yesterday, he signed legislation that said the national emergency is over, not the national health emergency, but the national COVID emergency. But we continue to suffer from the effects of the global pandemic and the costs that are associated with that, but also in a very difficult thing to understand, what we have seen is a shortage in housing stock and the driving up of housing costs here in New Jersey as a whole, but certainly here in Franklin Township, with, really, as I'm seeing no end in sight right now, at least may, it may flatten, but it certainly does not look to be going down. So as the mayor said, the costs associated with properties, the property values on the market have actually shown that our commercial properties did not increase at the same rate that our residential properties did. But I still think that with a great deal of work that was done here, to keep this budget at a 1% increase is a testament to the people who are driving me, that I'm, are all sitting to my left here, to make sure that it was done, and I think that I and staff have done as much as we possibly could to keep a lid on waste and spending, and this is the budget that was the best that we could do.
You did well. Any other comments?
I've always struggled with the fact that when the, my property assessments go up, which is a good thing for me, because if I want to sell my house, I get more value for my house, but then that also somewhat causes the taxes to go up because of the cost of the fact that the house is worth more value. But I've always thought that, some people may think that's bad, but I've always thought if I want to sell it, I make more money.
Well, to be philosophical, I think the idea of using property value to collect taxes is stupid.
But we didn't make the rules.
No, we didn't make the rules. Aggressive, that's too big a word for me. But no, it's just, it's something out of the 1600s or probably sooner than that, because someone's property value probably did relate somewhat to their means to pay. I think it should be based on means, your ability to pay. That way, if you lose your job or you retire and your income goes down, then you have a better way of, then your tax would go down, and if you're, you know, living large, then you can pay a little more taxes, you can afford to, but just because you're land-rich doesn't mean you can pay taxes. But that is what we are given. Anyone else? Where were we?
Me?
No, well.
We had a motion.
You had a motion, and that was discussion?
Yes, discussion. I do just want to acknowledge to the Township Manager's point, to the Financial Oversight folks, my colleagues, CFO, Andy, it's been a pleasure, this is my last budget. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that it's been a journey, a lot of work. Five years ago, I was just like, what is a budget? And now here I am. So I just want to acknowledge all of the work, all the extra study sessions I had with Andy, all the questions, you know, it is really a labor of love. A budget is a moral document, is what knowing we care about. So I just want to acknowledge that.
And the many hours that we put in, don't forget.
Yeah. The arguments.
The arguments, that's a good one.
I don't think there were arguments. They were friendly discussions.
Friendly discussions.
Yes. All right, any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
So now it is passed from the mayor, from the manager's budget to the council's budget. Mr. Manager, when will this be published?
So I, when I was just instructing our CFO to go home, because she's been here with me since 7 o'clock this morning, and now I can send a message to IT Department, and it will be published on the finance page probably within the next five or 10 minutes.
Good.
Finance on our homepage.
Excellent. I don't want to, okay, so we're now on to public hearings and adoption of ordinances on second reading. Ordinance 4406-23, an ordinance by the Township Council amending the Township of Franklin Code of Ordinances to repeal Chapter 193 Flood Damage Prevention and replace with a new Chapter 192 Flood Management, Flood Damage Prevention. Adopt flood hazard maps, designate a floodplain administrator, and providing for survivability and effective date. This presents to public hearing and final adoption. Public hearing has been noticed as required. The manager explained this earlier in the meeting. It's a new floodplain regulation. Do we have a motion for public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we are open to the public.
Mayor, seeing no one come up from the public, I'll, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, any questions? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Item number 15, ordinances on introduction and first reading. Flood Damage Prevention. Adopt flood hazard maps, designate a floodplain administrator, and providing for survivability and effective date. This presents to public hearing and final adoption. Public hearing has been noticed as required. The manager explained this earlier in the meeting. It's a new floodplain regulation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
For public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.